Good evening, everyone. If you'll please join us, we're going to have the presentation placed in place.
Let's bow heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together. Let your Spirit guide our discussion. We ask that you bless each person that is represented here today with grace and favor. We're asking a special blessing of our county leaders. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have reached an approval of the previous minutes.
I make a motion that be accepted.
We have a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Further discussion? All those in favor, right hand, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Under new business, we have item A, approval of the 2025 meeting calendar. Ashley?
Well...
Is this your work of art?
This is my work of art. Everything's been calculated to meet all the legal deadlines, 15 days to advertise, no more than 45 days for the Board of Commissioners. The closest one on the calendar is 44 days for the Board of Commissioners, and that's our January meeting. But everything else lines up. There's one meeting, I don't have it in front of me, that is on a Tuesday because there's a holiday that Monday. Everything else, though, falls consistently on that same Tuesday every month. So I know also that we had made mention before, and I know that we talked about it a little earlier, possibly moving the meetings to 5:30. So I didn't know if that's something that you guys are still interested in doing.
Well, should we vote on the calendar?
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote on the calendar, and then we'll talk about your time change.
Cool.
Do you have a motion to accept the calendar as presented for 2025?
I make a motion that we accept the calendar as presented for 2025.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, right hand? Motion carries. All right. So you suggested moving up?
Yes. And that's only because the Board of Commissioners, they have their meetings too at 5:30. I would be fine with even at 5 o'clock. I know that's up to y'all. Some of you guys work other jobs, so it just depends on whether or not you could get off. But I've had applicants, you know, over time, say, hey, it'd be nice if we could get in just a little sooner because some of these meetings, like tonight's meeting, tend to run a little late. Especially with the time change and everything, it's so dark outside. So if we could move that up any, if that's something you guys are interested in, I think that would be great.
What's the consensus of...
I think it would be good.
Especially if we want to... For 5:30?
That would be consistent too with the other committees.
Harold? All right. Do I have a motion to change the meeting time to 5:30 starting in January?
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, right hand? Motion carries. We'll get to dinner earlier too. All right. We have seven rezones tonight, and so we're going to move right through those. And the first one, open up a hearing on RZ 190851. Roy Donald Brady.
Thank you. I'm going to start by incorporating the entirety of my office's file and video recording for the planning commission's hearings, including but not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made part of the record and shall be available for the Board of Commissioners to review. And then just as a general disclaimer this month, because I know we were adding it on all of the rezones, all things that are presented and, you know, brought before the board, the planning and development staff will ensure that all future development shall comply with applicable codes to ensure that the residential structures on the property meet safety regulations to protect the health and welfare of surrounding residents. So the first rezon is RZ 190851. It's Roy Donald Brady. Mr. Brady is located at 1075 Waters Edge Circle. He is requesting to go from urban residential to estate residential. His tract size is 8.084 acres. The parcel is 012073. His intent for the rezoning request is to do a land swap with the area that surrounds him. The property owner is 1883, I think is what it is, that's Brian Orsmith. He is wanting to do a land swap with him, and his current zoning is the state residential. So to facilitate that, it has to be like zoning. So you can see here, it does show on the map still that Brian's property is zoned U R. It's actually E R now. So it would be like zoning in that. This is a copy of the survey of what they're wanting to do. Basically, I believe, and I'll let Mr. Brady speak on that in a second, I think he's going to be getting a little bit more on the south side, so there's a little bit more red furniture on this tract right here. It is a part of the rural residential character area. And after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the rezon of the 8.084 acre parcel known as 012073 from urban residential to estate residential to align the zoning with the adjacent tracts to facilitate the land swap.
Thank you. Mr. Brady? Come on up here. How are you, Mr. Brady?
Good.
What would you add to what Ashley has shared with us? What would you add to what Ashley has shared with us?
Yeah, the reason for the land swap is because the people that purchased the property on the left side of this, the way it was designed, what's called, when CIVIA had it divided into like a subdivision, and the front part of it, the way it shed, it makes it kind of tight for the other buyers to get down in there. So that was very important, technical part of the property. So Brian and I, we came up, hey, I come up down here, and we'll get to our lower part. Give it a little more privacy and a little part of our property.
So you and Brian, of course, traded.
Yeah. Yeah, because I started talking about mine, and he asked, well, okay, let's list this as a property trade. I said, that's mine only.
Any questions for Mr. Brady? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of this rezon. It's always supposed to happen.
Okay. We have a motion to approve in conjunction with the recommendation of the staff. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, right hand? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll close that hearing and open a hearing on RZ 190852. Tom Elliott.
So RZ 190852 is Sean Elliott. His property is located at 5770 Highway 136 West. He is requesting to take a 3.88 acre portion from Ag to Highway Business. His parcel number is 020016. The intent is to use that 3.88 acre portion to build a shop for his commercial equipment. As you can see there, he owns, it's right up, I think, it's a 15.78 acre parcel, so it is on both sides. You can see you've got the little connector here between 515 and 136. So he's surrounded by state routes on all sides. And then right below him, he also owns this, but he's going to keep that as Ag. So it's just that portion outlined in red. That's a copy of the survey that shows that portion by itself. It is a part of the arterial commercial corridor. I think this is the first time that we've seen a rezon in that corridor, but it basically just states that it is conducive to that neighborhood's commercial and highway business uses. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to the rezon for the 3.88 acre portion of the parcel identified as 020016 from Ag to Highway Business. The change aims to enable the construction of this facility for trucks and tractors. Furthermore, the rezon will facilitate subdivision of the tract from the other portion that's currently intersected by Highway 136.
I didn't ask, we didn't have anyone wanting to speak on any of these. Mr. Elliott?
Yes, sir.
Come on up here.
Okay.
Bring that little one with you.
Okay. How y'all doing?
How you doing? What would you add, what Ashley has shared with us?
She covered it well. I'd like to build a building and do it how we're supposed to do it, the rules, the regulations. And this is the process that's been called upon us, so I'm here to do what we have to do.
What kind of shop you going to have there?
Like a big square building, so I can put trucks and tractors in it?
Do you work on them, repair them, or use them?
I use it for myself. I work on them and I repair them. An indoor facility, stay out of the mud? Yeah.
These are large trucks, tractors. These are not like, what you would use on a farm for plow, that's right.
Both. So when I say tractor, I refer to a road tractor, which most people call a semi truck, or like an actual tractor for grading dirt, fields and such.
How many trucks do you...
Three.
Three? And will you be working on other people's as well?
No. It's just for myself.
Okay. And you have plenty of parking there?
Yes, ma'am.
Further questions? Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a... Excuse me, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation of the staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We'll close that hearing and open a hearing on RZ 190853. Robert Burton, on behalf of Southern Property Investments.
So RZ 190853 is Southern Property Investments, and we have Mr. Burton here representing that. Their property is located on Stonecrest Road. They're requesting to take 27.2 acres from Ag to small Ag. That parcel number is 034084002. The intent is to divide, is to divide the 27 acres into five tracts, each being five acres above your single family dwellings. You can see behind you, it is surrounded by Ag primarily. Right across the road, there's a similar development. And you can see in that next slide, that's about the same thing they're wanting to do. The one thing about this one, and we've met several times with Mr. Burton about this, when a subdivision's created, it has to be created on a county maintained or state road. You can't create a subdivision off of an access easement. This road is a little bit different because it's not maintained by the county, but it is in the county's road maintenance or road system. So it's not county maintained, but is owned by the county as far as the right of way. So we spoke with Mr. Burton in detail on that, basically letting him know that if he does choose to move forward with a subdivision and it is approved, he will have to bring the road from the beginning of Big Ridge all the way to his property up to county standard. It is a gravel road, and it's always been a gravel road, so he'll have to meet gravel road specs on that. But it does, he has to give us the additional right of way to have that full 60-foot right of way in that area. So that's going to be listed further in here, but just wanted to give that premise on that one. It's in the rural residential character area, so it is consistent with that. And then after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the 27.2 acre tract identified as 034084002 from Ag to small Ag to permit the five-plus acre density for family housing and related uses with the following condition, that parts of the existing Stonecrest or old Dean Mill Road right of way will be extended by 15 foot, resulting in required compliance of 60-foot wide easement with 1 foot on either side of the right of way center.
Mr. Burton?
Hey.
How are you?
I'm good. How are y'all?
What would you add, what you shared with us?
She tapped it really well. And her blessing, I really like the way that they're doing it now versus a few years ago. They're very complete in the way that the process flows. I've got a, I've met with the property owners and got written approval from them for the additional 15 on their side. So we get the right of way that's required to make it a safe road and one that allows for, you know, varsity vehicles and that type of thing utilities. And I'm thinking to the end of where the 27.2 acres is, we are still going to that point there. That's as far as we're going. So we're taking it from Big Ridge all the way there. I've already got quotes for that, and also got survey quotes. So once it's approved, we'll be ready to put in the tracks.
And so you'll have five tracks?
There'll be five tracks, yes, sir.
Five, probably five acres apiece?
Five or, just, the last one might be a little bit more, but other than at least five.
Are you going to build a home, so you're going to sell the lot?
Well, right now, I'll probably sell the first one, just to try to recoup some of the financial things and probably sit on it for a while, and just see how the market does.
What do you think the market is?
I don't know. It'll be in the springtime probably before I get all this done. So we'll have to see. A lot of things have happened as far as, you know, political and interest rates, so we'll have to see how things do.
Are you going to see how things go before you start?
No, before I start selling.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and get them lots, and then sell the first one. I'll go ahead and get my initial investment taken care of, and then I can see how the market does by selling others.
Questions for Mr. Burton?
And if I may add, when this was all inherited land, you'll see what's across from there. It's already like 1.8 acres right across the road. Majority of those are maybe the smaller. But they're not classified right as far as the zoning. We've got to go in. I met with the people who own those, those need to be corrected as well.
Questions? All right, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend approval based on the staff recommendation of changes to the road.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Welcome, Kevin. We'll close that hearing and open a hearing on RZ 190854. Brandon and Brett Rowland.
So 190854, like you said, is Brandon and Brett Rowland. They have property located on Highway 136 Connector. They have a 34.72 acre parcel, but they're requesting to take 15.12 acres of that to rural residential. That parcel number is 018030004. Their intent is to develop an eight-lot subdivision. You can see behind you, there's actually a few things going on with this parcel. So for starters, you've got, this right here is like a true out parcel that's owned by a couple, so they don't own that one, but the Rowlands also own this lot right here. So this lot right here is an ETC out parcel. They have facilitated a swap with ETC. So ETC is going to give them this land, and ETC is going to come in and use this piece of land for whatever they've got going on. And then you can see here, it's actually the front 15 acres that they're total, you know, rezoned for. So that house that's existing on that current RR tract on the left, not the one on the right, because that's the out parcel, the one on the left is going to be, the lot lines are going to be redrawn on that. And then they're going to leave that back portion with an easement to the front, and that'll stay Ag. So it is a part of the rural residential character area, which is consistent with what they're requesting to do. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the rezon request of the 15.12 acre portion of the property identified as 018030004 from Ag to RR, while leaving the remaining 18.02 acres classified as Ag. The front portion of the property will be combined with the tract identified as 018030, which is currently zoned RR, to facilitate the development of a minor single-family subdivision consisting of eight lots.
Is there, can we water there?
I believe so, yeah.
Rowland? Good evening.
How are you?
Which one are you?
I'm Brandon.
Okay, Brandon. So tell us what you got going here.
Uh, well, we just, we build 2,000 square foot homes, like a little smaller, but we build a bunch around. Just trying to keep it going, so. We like to try to build in one spot. We'll probably just do two at a time, and see how the marketplace out, but two to four at a time depending on the market.
And so with eight into 15, you have something less than two acres, or...
Yeah, they're all over an acre and a half, but one of them ended up being almost five acres. Just how it worked out. We did end up, the guy that's there, our line's really close to his house, so we're actually getting him an extra acre, so he's kind of to himself with it, so. But yeah, it worked out to about an acre and a half, maybe a hair over.
Did you consider any larger lots? Fewer lots, but...
We're on the back, we're probably, we're just going to hold on to it for a while, but we're trying to get as many lots as we could. Land's kind of getting crazy high, so more lots, but later we'll try to get them on deck.
So is that, the connector, is that state?
We have to combine the ends of the driveways, the states. We got a DOT already on that, so.
Questions for Mr. Rowland? Further questions?
What are your plans for the remainder of that lot that's going to state agriculture?
We're going to, our plans are trying to hold it for the kids. We might try to build them up. I got a young boy, he's got a young son as well, so hoping to get them started later on, maybe five years down the road. Let them build where they can have some land. We've just been hunting on it right now.
Further questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the rezon based on the details given.
All right. Motion to accept the recommendation of the staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Good luck. Rowland? Okay. We'll close that hearing and open a hearing on RZ 190856. Hannah Braswell, on behalf of Kristen Braswell.
So RZ 190856 is Kristen Braswell, and Ms. Hannah's here on her path tonight. The address is 558 Fitz Road. It is a 31.86 acre Ag parcel. They're looking to take 1.5017 to rural residential. That parcel number is 045006003. The intent is to take that portion and combine it with a neighbor's portion. I think they're actually going to be selling it to that neighbor to be combined. You can see there, that is the portion of land that this Braswell currently owns. And this is the neighbor right here that they're going to be combining that piece with. It's like a piece that's about right here that you can see on the next map, just right here. So it's this portion right here. And you can see that there's a creek that kind of runs on the backside of that property, so they're going to be actually selling that to that neighbor. But of course, in order to be compatible, it has to be like zoning, and currently, it's just like zoning.
So they end up, it was four?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and it's, let's see, 4.062 is what I think it comes up to. That character area is rural residential, so again, this is consistent with that character area. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the rezon request for the 1.5017 acre portion, known as 045006003, changing its designation from Ag to RR. This adjustment is intended to combine neighboring property identified as 045006002 to ensure compliance consenting regulations.
Braswell? How are you?
Good.
How are you? I'm good. I'm quiet.
You're quiet? That's okay. So you're going to work out a deal with your neighbor and so on and so on. What are they going to do?
They might have got another remodel on it, but they need a little bit more land to be able to have another second tank, so.
All right. Any questions? Ms. Braswell? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve based on the information provided by the staff.
We have a motion to accept the staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, right hand, please. Motion carries. Okay? We'll close that hearing and open a hearing on RZ 190857. David Schaus returns.
It's a couple months ago.
Ashley?
So RZ 190857 is Thompson Lane Dreams LLC, which is Mr. Schaus. That property is located at 370 Thompson Lane. There's two rezones tonight on the same piece of property. On this first one, they're requesting to take a 4.34 acre portion of a combined 60.62 acre parcel between 033129 and 033129002 from Ag to rural residential. The intent is to split the house from the Ag property and create an additional buildable lot. You can see back behind you, this is the property that we own. So that second parcel is out, is this little parcel down here that's got a little cell tower on it. So it's the big parcel and then this little big parcel right there. So this is the current survey versus the proposed survey. So the intent would be to get this lot up here as a buildable lot, as well as this one. And that's why it includes that extra parcel number in there, because it is going to take that little piece over. This is a part of the rural residential character area, and the request tonight is consistent with that character area. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the rezon request for the .23 acre portion identified as 033129002, and the 4.11 acre portion identified as 033129 to go from Ag to rural residential. This change will allow the existing house to be separated from the 60.31 acre parcels and create an additional lot for a single-family dwelling.
Mr. Schaus? Good to see you.
Good to see you, buddy. Good to see you. What would you add? The one lot, the top lot, it's already got a house on it, which was quite a, some gravy cables for 60 years or whatnot. That was, the whole parcel was on back, and I want to break that off, and I'm going to sell that house. The rest of it, I'm keeping and trying, as the next zone, trying to get two buildable lots, one small Ag, one residential, one for my mother, one for myself. And then we did break Kuva, we paid the penalty, and we're going to put 42 acres of the pasture back into it. So it's just really making it where it conforms for us to be able to build on.
So are you settling then the 4.34?
No, sir. I'm only going to sell the 2.1, the top, I think it's 2.32 acres or something. 2.32, or go ahead and see where your house was.
Question for Mr. Schaus? Do I have a motion?
Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion that we recommend approval with the general code of compliance disclosure.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right. We'll close that hearing and open a hearing on RZ 190858. David Schaus.
So 190858 is, again, that same piece of property, but this time he is looking at a 10.82 acre portion of it to go from Ag to small Ag. That parcel number is just the 033129, and the intent is to create a buildable small Ag lot with the possibility of there being two lots there. So this is the copy of the survey from that. You can see that small portion that we just talked about, it's got the house on it right here, so this actually surrounds that, and it is a 10.82 acre parcel. And again, the character area is rural residential, so the request that is presented is consistent with that character area. And after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval to rezon the 10.82 acre portion of the 60.39 acre property identified as 033129 from Ag to small Ag to establish smaller area for many forms.
Mr. Schaus?
The 10 acres was going to small Ag. I had a good buildable lot behind Gladys and Grady's original home, which is about five acres on the right-hand side of the driveway. And my thought was, I have another home that's behind me that I don't own. That, with the driveway going in between it, it almost made perfect sense to square that off and have another five future family if I wanted to split that. So I just go ahead and knock it up at one time. That was the only reason in between building the 10 acres, that small Ag, so I could go ahead and split it without having to come back.
Questions? Further questions for Mr. Schaus?
So you're only breaking it into two lots?
One, one 10.82, with, if I did break it later, just as a land split, it, they would be just a little over five apiece, one on one side of the driveway and one on the other. The 10 acres is split between that driveway. I don't think it has a road. I think it's just a driveway. That goes back to the Gorley's, the Gorley's home, which is part of the Cables family, or they gave them four acres behind me at one point. You can see it there on the map.
Further questions for Mr. Schaus? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend acceptance with the staff recommend, with the staff recommendation for general code of compliance disclosure.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the staff. Is there a second? Second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right. We'll close that hearing and now move to public comments. Public comments? Any board comments? Kevin, I don't think you would hear, we voted earlier that we start in January, we're going to start the meeting at 5:30. Director comments?
Just briefly, just, I apologize for being late, so getting the packets, just a little bit late. As you can see, we have, our staff is growing, and it's kind of tracked to the new everything, everyone's roles and what have you. We should be back on track in January. And there's some other changes that we're going to make, make sure we all get all the information that you need.
Give us till February.
Sorry. Give us till, give us till February.
I thought you said January.
I thought I said January, it's February. Yeah, give us February.
That was a verbal typo.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the final item is a motion to adjourn.
Sure move.
Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, right hand? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you everybody. Good to see you.